All right, thank you. All right, well, good evening and welcome to the December 11th Planning Commission meeting. And roll call?
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Valavouli.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Barubi.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any edits to the agenda? Or is there a motion to approve?
I have to approve.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the meeting minutes from the November 13th Planning Commission. Any comments on that? Commissioner Lee?
I know that we are trying to find a more concise way to document our meetings. This is sort of a, still kind of a work in progress, but I was wondering if on page three, where we had the discussion following the comp plan hearing, that we actually do record a few more of the commission's comments. I'm looking specifically at page three after Commissioner Bennett moved to close a public hearing. I did do some bullet points after re-watching the tape and tried to capture basically two points or so from each commissioner, but I do feel that what's currently there is kind of stated in a manner that this is something that the commission agreed to, which I think is basically individual comments. So, how would you like me to do that? I could review that later with...
I know, we've discussed that. I thought, and remind me, Carrie, but I thought that we agreed that to not edit the minutes, but then just to state that you felt that some of the, that the minutes didn't reflect everything to make sure that the council or public really goes back and watches the video. And I think that might be the safest way to do it.
Yes, that is what we discussed. I do feel that this particular, because it was a comprehensive plan, might merit a little more detailed sort of reaction from the comments of the Planning Commission, which I think were all good. They were all very factual, and in this particular case, I think maybe the meeting minutes could reflect a little more of that. As it is stated right now, I would have to take exception with sort of how that first paragraph was written. The commission indicated three different approaches came forward. I think those were primarily the comments of one commissioner. And the second paragraph, the commission indicated, oh, I'm sorry, the second city, second sentence, there were concerns with the parts of the comp plan. Those were primarily my comments, but there were a lot of comments made by other people up here on the bench that I feel were not noted equally. So I guess my question would be why those particular ones would be called out. If you don't mind, I can read quickly what some of the bullets are to sort of just give you an idea of what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah, I just...
I guess I would rec, the video is the official record. My recommendation would be that we strike the three different approaches sentence, and the video is, is, that's the official record.
Well, what do others think? I guess I can open it up. Are there, for discussion, anything on this?
I think the video is the record. Then there's, less is better here, because we basically just want to record which motions were made, which were seconded, you know, how they were seconded, that they passed or didn't pass, right?
Yeah.
So simpler and more straightforward is better.
Okay. If we do delete the comments about the three approaches, is it the first sentence? And then it begins with the commission acknowledged that change was hard? And that the commission expressed concern with criticism of the Edina schools? Those are all points that I, I guess I take exception to, and the way it's phrased, it implies that that was sort of a general consensus of the commission. To me, it seems more accurate to actually capture, either capture some of the points or, again, just delete all and say, refer to the video.
Yeah, I would recommend that you strike, starting with the commission indicated three different approaches, the whole rest of that sentence.
And we would put in place, do you put any, in place any language, Carrie? Would you recommend? How do you refer to the video or say?
Well, I thought we were saying that when we had that issue, to at least do some kind of notation, that, you know, there was some very important discussion and please...
When it goes to city council, we were going to indicate that in the council packet to encourage them to look at the, at the tape.
But to also highlight if we had a certain section that we really wanted them to focus on and...
A certain part of the meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so again, what would be, what would be in place of this deleting all this language, or it would just go from Commissioner Bennett moved to close a public hearing, Commissioner Miranda seconded the motion, the motion carried, and then the motion? Is that correct?
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, any other comments on the minutes?
I would like to have the opportunity to just sort of read what I would propose that we do on something when it's as important as the comp plan, if I could just be indulged a bit.
Are you saying you want to read your comments from that meeting?
I would like to read the bullet points. I would like to read what I would propose as a method of documenting what happened during the important comp plan public hearing and the final comments of the commissioners. And this comes verbatim from the tape, but it would indicate how written notations and the tape do not contradict, but can actually supplant.
I'll open up to the rest. Do you want to do that? Do you want to just make a motion and move forward? Looking over here, looking at you guys. Any comments?
I'm not really understanding the purpose of that, because if anybody wanted to know, they could watch the video and get much more than we would ever get.
Sure, but my point is, this, the idea of documenting the minutes, I think that we're still sort of in a process of figuring out where's that balance. If we truly are not going to record anything, then we really wouldn't be taking any minutes other than to literally, I think it's just, when you look at it, it's just the bold points, right?
And I think that's what the intention is, right? That we just have the bold points, so we could edit a lot of that out.
Well, then, under reports and recommendations, we wouldn't have Affordable Housing Development Manager Hodgson presented the request. We wouldn't have any description of anything. And if that's the intent, I guess I get it, but I think that there is some merit to the written word in the summarization of it.
Yeah, there's definitely merit in having the comments available. There's a lot more merit to have the depth of comments along with the intonation, and so why kind of go halfway? Let's just cut out the comments and have the bold and make it one page.
Again, I'd like to have the opportunity to just sort of read the points that I'm trying to give as an example of how a summary might be done as a bold points. I'm not saying that this is, this needs to be the way it's done, but I'd like just to explain to the rest of the commission sort of what a bullet point summary could look like based on the comments that were made up here on the bench.
I, my only hesitation is just I kind of feel like this is just being used to present your points again, and that's where...
And I feel that hesitation too, so I think the only way we can do that is just simply let me read this so that you can kind of see that I am just capturing what was said, and you can see what, what is missing actually from sort of this kind of documentation.
Okay, well, if you can just maybe keep it brief.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I agree with that.
Okay, so in lieu of that paragraph, it would be something like, Commissioner comments included, thanks in, bullet one, thanks and appreciation for the consultant's dedication, hard work, and to everyone involved, bullet two, noting that we have done an outstanding job of balancing things and that this is a great plan. Bullet three, the plan was a complete rewrite, almost 4,000 pages, a huge undertaking. Bullet four, relatively tame public hearing of three in favor, one opposed, is a testament to the thoroughness of the collaborative nature of the process. Bullet five, residents feel they got a chance to speak their minds and things have been reflected. Bullet six, it's been a long process, but a very comprehensive process, and we will work to see that it gets implemented and that it will be achievable. So I have other bullets, but that's sort of the flavor or the nature of it. I think it captures what we said without forcing someone to the tape. And the reason I am standing by the written word is because, again, I'm involved in a business that's very much dependent on the written documentation as well as graphic documentation. In my business, we work with drawings. In this business, yes, we can have videotapes, but I think there's some merit in this final step of the approval process to note what other commissioners had said. And I just had the sense that what was captured here was not reflective of what all of us had said. Thank you.
Yeah.
If, if you would like, we could, you could not take action tonight. We could take another shot at it, look at those bullets and include that. I'm kind of sensing that you like that approach.
Sure.
I'd be happy to provide that too, and you guys could all take a look at it and see if there's any objection to anything. I could provide that to Liz as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as long as we're also are just emphasizing that, to watch the tape, how difficult would it be to put in the minutes that it was like between 22 to, you know, the time period on the tape? So it'd be easy for people, or is it? I don't know.
Personally, I think that there's a lot more time that has to be taken in, in watching a tape where you can read this in 30 seconds. So, you know, there's merits to having some written documentation.
Yeah. Okay, well, is there, so is there a motion to approve the minutes? Are we gonna wait, are we gonna table it? So is there a motion to table?
A motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have community comment, and this is when anyone can come up and speak about an item that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No? Okay. Moving from that, we have one public hearing, and this public hearing is for a preliminary plat with variances for 4625 Lexington Avenue. And Carrie?
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So this property is located just south of the Edina Country Club, north of Southview Middle and Concord Elementary School. See, it's located on Lexington. Note here that Lexington was originally platted to go through, but as you can see, there's a large wetland here, so that street was never constructed all the way through. Here's a look at the property. It was originally platted as two lots, two 60-foot wide lots similar to the lot to the west and to the south. Closer look at the property. Note that the properties on the south side of Lexington all have their driveway access onto Lexington. These homes here on Oak, their driveways face Oak Drive, so it's actually their rear yards that face the subject property. Here's a street view, so the subject property is on the left and the property to the north, the rear yards there to the right. What the applicant's proposing to do here is divide the, that existing property into basically reestablish the original plat and remove the existing home. So here's a look at the exist, or the, the original plat. It was the subdivision of Latell Park, highlighted in red. You can see it was platted as two lots. The roadway was to go through, back in the days where we could have filled a wetland. However, that was vacated due to the wetland that was, that was never filled. And the properties to the north, note that the lot sizes are larger. So Lexington kind of became the dividing line for narrower lots to the south and then wider to the north. Again, there's the, how the property's actually developed in the area. So again, the applicant is proposing to tear the home down. The area outlined, the dashed line, those would be the potential building pads. They've indicated rain gardens in the rear to control that drainage off the site. So this request requires a subdivision, lot width variances from 75 feet to 60 feet for both lots, and a lot area variances from 9306 square feet, which is the median of all the properties within 500 feet, down to just over 8,000 square feet for each lot. So primary consideration for the Planning Commission, are the variances met with this subdivision? In this case, staff is recommending approval, although as, as with a lot of these subdivisions, similar in nature, we've outlined an option for approval and denial and made that case. But in this instance, staff is recommending approval. The practical difficulty in this case is that it was a previous owner that decided to combine those two lots and, and build one home on the property. So the proposal is simply to reestablish the original plat. We believe the variance is reasonable in the context of the neighborhood. Again, the lot to the west is a 60-foot wide lot right here, and then all the properties to the south are also 60 feet wide, and the homes to the north face out onto Oak Drive. This is a graphic that I show with all of the, well, basically over the last 15 years where we've had subdivisions somewhat similar in nature where it's reestablishing the original plat. So the property that we're looking at, you see here's Pamela Park, is actually just to the north of the screen. So it's generally within this neighborhood where we've been seeing a lot of these types of requests. And so the, the properties with the red star are projects that the city has approved, but we, the city has also denied, denied these types of requests. And in the instance when it's been a denial, it's been in a neighborhood where there's a real mixture of lots, either adjacent to or across the street, similar sized lots, which is the case here. In this circumstance, however, we haven't had one that faces the rear yards of lots. So in a way, this, this is a little bit different from those projects. So we do look at them on a case-by-case basis. So in closing, again, staff has outlined alternatives for approval and denial, but in this case, staff is recommending approval, subject to those findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. And with that, I can stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Are there questions? Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, Carrie. Carrie, could you, yes, that, that view you just had, that's, that's, that's a good one. So, subject property is outlined in red. Visiting the side, I mean, across the street would be the north side. They, I mean, it looks like that block was all originally platted, all very much with the same size lots, right? I mean, but, and it looks like those lots must have been combined too, because, I mean, they're much larger.
Correct.
But really, the, yeah, I mean, but those are, those are also platted, so...
They're a little bit, they're like 67, 60.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But yeah, but you're right.
Same. So, obviously, you know, it's platted, that's the original city intention of how this neighborhood is to look, right?
Correct.
Then, by development, if people buy up two, maybe three lots and, and develop, and then all of a sudden, it's sort of, then the lot sizes that get built then determine the planning intention? I mean, it's sort of...
Yeah, so when they, when they, when this was originally platted, that was a conforming lot, a 60-foot wide lot. The city has since changed its regulations, so in order to reestablish those old plats, they require variances from both lot area and lot width.
And that lot size is determined by how it developed? And you, you looked at properties within that?
That median radius, right, which is actually the circle that's shown on this graphic.
And if, and we're not talking about variances to what the setbacks for a particular house that would go on that lot or any of those, we're just talking the lot sizes.
Correct.
Variance for the lot size. We're not talking about any, what, what thing, what they would build on there, so...
That is correct. So the, if, if the, if the council ultimately approves this subdivision with those lot size variances, these two lots become buildable and they would have to meet the required setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Great, other questions for Carrie? Any que, go ahead, Sue.
Carrie, one question I had was, I just wanted to note, I think that the staff report is missing from the online download agenda PDF copy. That might want to be checked.
The staff report is not online?
Yeah, it's, you know, in the hard copy, the PDF copy. It's, it's in the, it's in the clickable, but it's not in the PDF copy.
With the combined one.
Right, right, right. Can you describe the process? I noticed on the report, so for grading and stormwater mitigation, bullet number three says, "The final grade as-built surveys and inspections will be required to verify compliance with the approved stormwater management plan." So every time development comes in, they have to provide a stormwater management plan.
A building permit.
After it's built and constructed, the inspections will be required to verify the compliance with that plan.
Correct.
Can you describe the process the city uses to verify this and what will occur or does occur if there are discrepancies?
Right, so when they're ready for a certificate of occupancy, it needs to be signed off by all the different departments in the city that review the plan. So planning is one of them. We're checking for setbacks, those kind of things. It's the engineering department that verifies that in the field, it's been graded per the plans that were submitted with the building permit.
And then if it's not, what happens?
They don't get their certificate of occupancy until they come into compliance.
Until they make that correction.
Right.
Okay, so that's contingent on certificate occupancy. I think, I'm just asking the question because it's always kind of a, sort of a standard response that we typically give, that these things need to be verified, but obviously there might be cases where it doesn't quite check out. Under public utilities, I think your fourth bullet noted that there's some bituminous roadway patching that will be required, and that the road is going to be seal-coated in 2022. The bullet after that says, "The sewer and water connection charges shall be paid prior to building permit issuance." Is the city liable for the cost of the bituminous as a result of a subdivision cost, or is that picked up also by the applicant?
That's picked up by the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, again, that's part of the, the building permit that comes in. There's an escrow that's, that's put down, and they're responsible for those costs.
Okay, it just kind of read a little differently, I wasn't sure.
You're referring to the engineering memo?
Yeah, yeah, the one-inch connection, looks like they're picking up that, but it didn't quite, it wasn't quite clear about the patching part of it, so, okay. And after attending the Planning Commission training, one of the things that I think I realized in terms of the subdivision and the variance requests that we receive, it is really seen in light of sort of this, the practical difficulties, obviously, but also that it goes back to administering the comp plan. And knowing now, so this is very timely, that we are about to embark on a new comp plan, just, just a suggestion, when we go through here and, and you're giving us the findings for variance, are they met? C is a very important one, and that came up in our training. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And we had a discussion about how difficult that is to define, but I think basically what our training said was, if you go back to your comp plan, there's got to be things in there that you're after. So if it's, is it, is it tree canopy? Is it a priority on stormwater drainage? Is it a focus on, on trying to maintain character in terms of overall sort of the appearance of, of the homes? They even went so far to say as you could actually institute, you know, physical requirements on, on houses. But I think since we are now about to do that, in this particular case where we have only talked about, well, it's going to put two more single-family homes similar in size, in the future, if, if we could also approach it in terms of looking at those other things in the comp plan, it either enhances or, or doesn't do any more significant change from the tree canopy, or maintains a tree canopy, or those kinds of things, pulling some of those things in the future, I think would be really great to show that we're, we're actually piggybacking off the comp plan.
In terms of the findings or conditions?
Yeah, no, in terms of defining what is essential character of the neighborhood, our comp plan is kind of starting to do that.
That's a difficult one to...
Yeah, it is, but we have things we can fall back on, like living streets and, and, you know, your tree ordinance, those kinds of things, and the stormwater priorities on the stormwater. So it may not be necessarily applicable to this particular one, but I'm, I'm just realizing that that might help us.
Sure.
Because we always have a hard time trying to define what the neighborhood character is. The other thing I was going to say is that on the training part, the idea of precedence, I was surprised to find out that we were told to not, not really fear, or I should say, be too concerned about precedence, that we have to approach each, each submittal as it's totally individually unique, that we are coming at this with a set of fresh eyes, because indeed, are any two parcels the same? So when we do something like summarize our past decisions over the last 20 years, I think that's good for historical context, because we would ask that question no matter what. What have we decided in the past? But we also have to realize that when that comes up as a subject, oh, if you do vote that way because of, you know, you might set a precedent. If we are convinced that we have looked at this objectively as its own unique parcel, that we need not fear that as a Planning Commission, and the city as well, does not have to rely on anything that happened prior to that going forward. So I thought that was just a really helpful one, and this just sort of reminded me of that point.
Absolutely, and you can see our track record, we do really look at each one individually, and that's, I think, why you see the independence in the, in the decisions that have been made. And this one, this one is different from all those other ones, for sure.
Any other questions for Carrie? All right, thanks. So is the applicant here, would they like to speak? And just say your name and address and, thanks.
Hi, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jessica Lindberg, and my husband Dave is right over here, and we've been the property owners of 4625 Lexington Avenue since 2012. And prior to that, we lived exactly one block south at 4625 West 56th Street, and we lived there since 1999. So we've been in this immediate neighborhood for the past 20 years. We have three boys, Charlie's 16, Mikey's 14, and Matt is 12, and they've grown up in this neighborhood. And I've been a teacher in the Edina Schools at Highlands Elementary for the past 23 years. So we love this neighborhood and this community. We purchased 4625 Lexington Avenue from the second owner of the home, and we purchased it knowing that it was a double lot and that we would want to split the lots in the future. So here we are in this process. We believe that subdividing these properties will return the properties back to their intended sizes and will match the character of those in our immediate neighborhood. We've reached out to our surrounding neighbors about this project. We've received verbal support and even some written support that I think you've seen, and we just want to recognize that we've been appreciative of all the support that we've received. And we have our civil engineer here who did the designs for the subdivision that can answer any specific... answer any specific questions that you might have, and we're also happy to answer any questions, too. Thank you.
Don't sit down yet. There might be questions.
Okay.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I did.
Okay.
So can you just explain kind of your plans for the home? So you purchased it, and you, so you're going to tear it down? And what is it, like, what shape is it in, and does it need to be?
Yeah. There is some practical difficulty with our current home. It's a three-bedroom as one full bath, and it's right in the middle of this double lot. And we, like I said, bought it from the second owners, so it really hasn't, they were in their 90s, and they had lived there for over 50 years. It hasn't had any renovations or additions, or it's really in its original shape, and we're just at the point now where we really would like to stay in this neighborhood, and this would allow us the opportunity to get the lots back to their original plat, and then we would build on one of them.
So it's kind of just the fact that, so you kind of need that income to be able to?
I mean, it would be considered, from where we're located, a teardown right now, it would need a lot to get it to what we would need. So this is why we thought we would go this route.
The house, it sounds like if you say that it's a teardown, so then as the homeowner, you're faced with the decision, do we rebuild? You've got a couple of options, you can rebuild on the existing foundation, you can do a completely different foundation based on setbacks, current setbacks, but you're probably finding that that's more than you need, that you are able to actually just create a new home that meets your needs and only need half the, half the parcel?
We don't need both.
Okay.
Those lots.
Yeah.
And I think the, one of the main reasons we have so much neighbor support is that all of our adjacent neighbors don't want the home to become a huge home on two lots, where you wouldn't need any type of variance. So one of our neighbors next door said, "We've been wondering when you would do this," you know, I think it's, so that's sort of where we're at. We don't need both the properties, and in order to build a new home, it would help us to subdivide and split one of them, sell one, and then build on the other.
Sure. I would be interested in hearing from your civil engineer when you're done with the questions, so thank you.
I think we're probably there, if the civil engineer wants to come up, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Lance Elliott, I live at 5616 Dalrymple Road in Edina, and like Jesse said, I did the civil plans for the project.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you explain sort of the concept? I think I saw the idea of using rain gardens, but if you could explain, was that part of your work?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so maybe just explain, run through a little bit of sort of the existing slope of the drainage, of how it currently works and how this is going to kind of be developed?
Sir, can we bring up the drawing, Carrie? And I've worked on a number of lots here in Edina, and have assisted on similar projects to this for other clients and everything, and I look at each lot individually based on the drainage of the lot, which, whether it's a subdivision or just a new construction, now we have to, even if there isn't a subdivision, if it's just a new construction-type project, the whole site has to be brought up to the new standards versus how the lot has drained over its lifetime. In many cases, the biggest thing is to look at making sure the drainage from the lot, especially with the new house, doesn't impact the neighbors, doesn't drain onto neighbors' properties, in a way that's either different from what it currently does, or if there's no way to route water since lots are side-by-side, and some of these developments don't have drainage easements put in place back when they're originally plotted, we try to keep the drainage patterns as close as possible to what it currently is, and also to make sure that whatever additional impervious surface is implemented on the site, that the runoff from the site does not exceed the current runoff conditions. In addition to that, now the watersheds have imposed an infiltration requirement to capture, say, a one-inch rainfall before the water leaves the site. So in most cases on the new projects, if they're designed correctly, the watershed runoff is actually less than what the current conditions are, when you implement those two requirements.
Are the, as they're shown now, are those gardens, rain gardens sized accordingly based on your calculations? Is that approximately the amount of area that would?
Correct, so the rainwater gardens designed for this site are based on maximum, what the maximum allowable impervious surface for that site. So if the resulting home or the hard surface coverage is less than that, there could be the possibility to decrease the size, but it's designed on a worst-case situation.
So this isn't work that has to be put, will be put in before the land is sold off? It's just a suggestion for the new, the additional lot? I'm not saying the homeowner's lot, but the additional lot?
Correct, so the intent at this point in time is to show what I would kind of call a proof of watershed requirements.
Okay.
And that if, particular, let's say, someone purchases property and they wanted to do a different infiltration requirement or underground system, or something of a slightly different design, as long as they could prove to the watershed and to the city that it's adequate to meet the requirements or meets and exceeds what I have shown here, that is a possibility. I think in most cases, on all of my projects, I can only think of one or two where they did something slightly different, in almost every other case, they implemented what I show on the plans.
Well, I appreciate you going through this exercise, because I think that always seems to be a great concern of neighboring properties, is that, as we know, a lot of properties already take a lot of stormwater drainage just naturally from other properties, but it is good to be able to at least address this in this discussion and see that that was given some thought, so I appreciate you going through that exercise.
Any other questions before I sit down?
Are there any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing, if there's anyone here who would like to speak, they are welcome to come up now. And you can use either podium and just state your name and address.
Hi, my name's David Frankel, I live on Lakeview Drive. First of all, I'd like to comment on the mailer. There's really no sense mailing out anything that's illegible. This thing, you know, I even tried to make it larger and it's still illegible, so some of the questions I have may be in this. Now, you're all looking like you've never seen this before. You know, there are federal ADA requirements that anything that any government sends out has to be legible, and this is not. So anyway, back to the matter at hand here, it was brought up about the water and the rain gardens, and also was brought up, Commissioner Lee brought up the issue of what happens if it doesn't work. Well, a big problem we have right now with policy is, yes, we get permits, yes, we approve. In between those two, the city says, "Do whatever you want to do." The city and the watershed district, when it comes to rain and water gardens, should be involved in the whole process. They should approve and look at the initial drawings of what the rain garden will be, they should have oversight to make sure it's going to meet the requirements, so when they come to the process of approving it, it's exactly what it should be. Because over the years, probably in the last 10 years I've lived in Edina, there's been dozens of lawsuits of neighbors suing either the neighbor or the city over water issues, runoff issues, and I know of several pending right now. The city, no pun intended, washes its hands of these water programs of water runoff, it can't be that way. Don't pit neighbor against neighbor. Make sure the city's involved and make this work. I'm not here because I'm opposing what this family wants to do, I'm opposing the city's hands-off approach. We pay inspections, we pay engineers, we have environmental people, we have housing people, make sure they do their job through the whole process, not at the beginning, not at the end, through the whole process. It's called project management. And Commissioner Lee, again, since you like paper documents, that's project management, you track the whole project and you know where you're at. And I think we need more of that in the city of Edina, more hands-on approach by the city of Edina to track these types of projects. The other thing is, you know, the stormwater projects, a lot of times, they don't work. You may be realized right now, 2019 is the wettest year in Minnesota in recorded history, but the watershed district thinks it's going to work, may have worked last year or the year before, it didn't work this year. The other issue with stormwater, the rain and water gardens, obviously we have winter here, in the spring, if we get 100-year rain, right after the ground's frozen solid, those water gardens aren't going to do anything. So that's part of the plan, what if, what if? Take the worst-case scenarios that were worst-case last year and make them this and next year's scenarios, because they are going to happen. You know, due to climate change, we're going to see more and more rain, and we're predicted to have a heavy winter, as far as snow goes and precipitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? Sina, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Second, second, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing closed. So bringing it back to the planning commission, are there other comments, or? Go ahead, Lou.
A lot of this reminds me of the neighborhood I live in, which is Morningside, and we have a similar situation where it's an older neighborhood, a lot of plots or plats were developed as single lots, and over the years, they've been combined and some have been split up and everything. And it's pretty clear that you see a regular pattern of what the plats are and what the size of the properties are, and even though across the street, they have a different pattern, it's pretty clear that within the neighborhood they're in, that the pattern is that they're 60-foot-wide lots. In fact, that's how they're originally done. So, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that in terms of neighborhood character or whatever, that that's essentially how it was done, and I think it's pretty clear that we should vote for that.
So I would echo what Commissioner Miranda said. I do think it's important, though, before we move on, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Frankel's comments, they seem really valid. I have never seen anything come in the mail to me, and I think it's really important that what we do send out is legible, so I hope the people who have the power to control that are listening. And I think what you said about the water, and more importantly, the follow-through, you know, really having someone you know, not just to prove it until they know for sure it has been done as the permit stated it would be, is really important. So thank you for bringing those up. I would say, though, that those particular comments would not deter me from thinking that this seems like a decent proposal. So I think truly valid comments, but I would echo what Commissioner Miranda said, that this makes sense to me to go back to the two plots as it was originally stated, and it looks like, you know, those sizes fit in with what was intended and what the rest of the neighborhood is.
Any comments on this side, or? Go ahead, Sue.
I also agree with Commissioner Perube's comments, in particular, what Resident Frankel had brought up, there is, obviously, on this particular property, it says the current drainage drains towards, south towards private property. That's not unusual in Edina, we have that all over, but we also know that certain properties serve almost as the holding basin for the water runoff in the area. So it is really important that things at least are not made any worse. So again, I do think that it's helpful to go through that exercise, and that as a city, obviously, that should be a very important piece anytime we're looking at a subdivision, because we truly are changing something now from what is existing. The drainage is a suggestion here, but I think that it has been reviewed by the engineer, and there are those checkpoints. Carrie, is there any additional response you might have towards some of those comments about the follow-through? Is it true that we're only looking at sort of the beginning and the end? What happens in between when the project's under construction?
Yeah, so there's checkpoints all through a construction project, where the building department is out there to inspect various points of the construction. We also have the residential redevelopment coordinator, you know, if there's issues with the site, he responds to complaints, so there's some monitoring going on in that regard, too. So there are checkpoints throughout a project, and it is absolutely, it can be an issue in the spring, when a site, the erosion control is vitally important, making sure that's in place, because maybe a site hasn't been final graded per the plan, that's when it's really important. When that grading hasn't taken place, the erosion control fencing needs to be in place and controlling that runoff.
Thank you. Go ahead, Carrie.
Yeah, I support this project, I think the intention, it's the property owner's right, I think, to develop it, you know, as they purchased, as it was originally plotted, you know, as two lots, and I think the alteration is back in some way to the original intent of how the properties in that area were to be developed, and I think denying this would in fact be a much bigger alteration of the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Jimmy.
I have a number of competing thoughts here. I think for me, I mean, all of these, you know, it's, how do you determine altering the essential character of the neighborhood? And, I mean, that's a sliver of discretion we tend to have with these subdivision requests, and so for me, it tends to be an easier decision, because that's the principle by which I make this decision, and this particular location, being unique like all of the ones that come to us, I think the deciding factor really is the fact that the street, the houses across the street are not facing this. Because had that be the case, you'd have this kind of natural little community right there, and all of those lots would be kind of bigger and it's its own unique kind of place in Edina. And the fact that it's got its back turned to it is what makes me okay with this, because now it more is a part of, you know, the backyards of the ones to the south and kind of matching those. Back to what Commissioner Lee mentioned about the comp plan, I think one thing we tried to make clear was not, you know, trying to bring density into the city by bringing it into the single-family neighborhoods, so if, you know, if we're to consider that or that's part of the decisions, that's a reason not to do this, as well as the other things I mentioned. But I'm in support of this, all things considered.
So just add my thoughts, I struggled with this one, again, at the start, because looking, just looking at the area and just kind of doing the quick drive-through, I kind of thought that this larger, you know, combined lot kind of met the character of the neighborhood, but I talked with Carrie this afternoon, I went back out and drove around, and I agree, too, with the fact that the homes are to the, you know, back along that street, and this could be torn down and be a, you know, a big, big mansion, so... But I also had the same comment that you thought, too, you know, here we are, we're, you know, adding the density in the single-family, single-family zone, but the fact that it was originally the two smaller lots, I think, I'm comfortable with supporting it, too. So is there a motion or more discussion? We don't have Todd, who's Todd? Jerry?
I move that we approve the preliminary plat variance for 4625- I move that we approve the preliminary plat variance for 4625 Lexington as outlined in the staff memo.
Yes, sir. A second, is there further discussion? Sue?
I am in support of this division. And I thank Commissioner Bennett for bringing up that point about added density in the single-family neighborhoods. I think that, I guess I take that more as a comment that we were really trying to keep sort of multifamily out of, of single-family neighborhoods. And we have consistently had larger lots that, I think we just had that one on the Oak Lane Outlet, that will keep coming up. And to me, it kind of makes sense that, if anything, homes should get a little smaller. And this might be a way to sort of encourage that more conservation, smaller carbon footprint. So in some ways, I feel justified that that's not totally against our comp plan goals. I did want to contrast this with that Outlet example. If we are going to take a wider view of sort of neighborhood character, obviously, this one, I don't see a lot of tree coverage. It is kind of wide open. It is kind of, in some ways, an easy decision. We do and should be looking more forward to what our comp plan states and really looking hard at these as individual requests, totally unto themselves and weighing the pros and cons. Anytime there's a variance involved with a subdivision request, it is not a right of the property owner to subdivide. That's why they're here. So I think we need to understand that, that if it were a right, we wouldn't be here. And so in some ways, that's inconsequential as a factor to decide for it. But as I said before, I'm in support of this. It seems to match all sort of those benchmarks, even in the upcoming comp plan that we've set for ourselves.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So next on the agenda are reports and recommendations. And under this, we have the finding that the acquisition of 4040 West Seventieth Street is consistent with the comprehensive plan, tax increment financing district. Who's presenting, are you or?
I'm going to tee this one up.
Okay.
We have all of our experts here to answer any questions that you might have. So this is another request of the planning commission to make a finding for comprehensive plan compliance. I think we did one a couple of months ago for the Amundsen site, for the city council to consider as it's considering a tax increment financing district. So on December 17th, the city council has scheduled a public hearing to consider modification of the Southdale Two Tiff District. The properties in question are the Amundsen site, that the planning commission's already made that finding, that the project plans are consistent with the comp plan for that one. The new one that's introduced this evening is 4040 West Seventieth Street. I've laid out on the dais in front of you the site location. It's Seventieth and Valley View Road. The property is zone planned commercial district, so housing is a conditionally permitted use there today. The comprehensive plan guides this site for between 25 and 75 units an acre. The site is 1.58 acres in size, so it would, a maximum density of up to 118 units would be allowed. The Edina Housing Foundation is purchasing this property, similar, really the exact same as the Amundsen project, where they purchased a lot and they went out for, they sought proposals on development of the site. So they're going to do that again with this project. And they'll be asking any developer who goes for that development has to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So the idea here is to do senior housing up to a maximum of 118 units an acre. The zoning allows up to four stories. So there's, the, any project that's brought before the planning commission and city council would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. That was one of their conditions with the Amundsen site. When this plan, when your packets were sent out, Commissioner Nemiroff suggested an addition to the resolution that's in front of you, and I think it was a good suggestion. It's, there's a little red asterisk by it. And it's, the addition is, states, whereas the commission has based its review of this project upon a determination that a multifamily use is an authorized use for this property. And any commission recommendation to approve or request for a development would be conditioned upon review of a specific development plan submitted at the time of development. And that will take place once they have settled on a developer. It would have to come before the planning commission and city council and it would conform to the comprehensive plan. So with that, the ask this evening again is for the planning commission to confirm that the residential use within those density parameters is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We do have Nick Anhut here from Ellers, who's the city's Tiff consultant. Don Urum, the finance director, is here to answer any questions you have, you may have. But again, we don't want to get into the weeds of the detail. You're really asked to make a finding on the land use. This one is a little different in that we don't have the specific development plan before you. It's kind of one of those timing issues. So this one is a little different. So with that, we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Carrie, and I think that, you know, adding that last whereas to the resolution does make it a little bit easier to, you know, move forward without having any plans before us. Anyway, so are there other comments or questions? Go ahead, Sue.
Carrie, you said the site is guided for 25 to 75 units per acre. Is that in our new comp plan? Is that the new number?
The new number, yes.
Okay, so if you do the math, it comes out to a maximum of 118 dwelling units per acre. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the added point, you said that would be true even without adding it? It would still have to come before us?
Yes, it would, it just emphasizes it.
It's just to put it in writing to make it clear. Well, I'm for as few words as possible. I mean, I like the written part, but if there's, if it's not added substantially. But all right, I'm sure he had a reason for wanting that in there. He is an attorney, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so is there a motion? So are we taking a motion to approve this resolution as presented on? Okay, correct.
I will motion, I will move to approve. Sorry, I have to think about my words. Before I say that, I think the important thing here is that we are not discussing whether we like Tiff or what Tiff is about. All we're doing is saying that the proposed use of this property fits with our understanding of what's in the comprehensive plan. And that seems perfectly straightforward to me. So I'd like to move that we approve this resolution as stated.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And there's a discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Thanks. Well, you guys got off easy. We've been trained, we've been trained not to ask about Tiff. All right, so we've got, next on the agenda is correspondence and petitions. Anything? Nope. Chair and member comments, do we have any? I have no comments. Hey, Jimmy?
Just update, I mean, since our last meeting, the city council approved the comp plan. Did we talk about that in here or not? Just to comment, it was approved 4 to 1, so. Good work, everyone, again.
Yeah.
Everyone out there, yeah.
I think we have to comment that you, on the coldest day of the year, you walk in here without a beard.
I know, what happened? Who is this guy?
Let's see, do we want to like just do a little quick recap of what the work session was about tonight? Or, you know, just kind of give a heads up of what might be coming down? Are you comfortable doing that, Carrie?
Sure. So what we would like to, well, what we will be doing in January is rolling out another piece of the Better Together to try to improve our public input gathering. So we're going to start with any variance requests that we get within the public hearing notices that were brought up this evening. And we'll make those, we'll do a better job. That one, when he held it up, it didn't look very clear, so we'll work on that. But there's also indication, you know, when the public hearings are to be held, within that notice, we would put in there where to go on Better Together to provide feedback. So once they receive that public hearing notice, essentially, the public hearing is open. They would go to Better Together, they can enter their address and a PIN drops on the location of the property in proximity of the variance request and they can put their comment in there. The planning commission can then go to Better Together and see all the comments that have been made. We thought that being your meetings are Wednesday night, we would cut off the comment the Tuesday at noon before your meeting, produce a report, kind of a summary report of all the comments, and then send that out to the planning commission. We would still take comments from Tuesday noon up until the date of the meeting like we do now through the regular council or planning commission correspondence and email those to you and put them in front of you the night of the meeting. So we're going to start that for, well, we don't have any applications for the first meeting in January for variances, but it's in all likelihood, we will for the second meeting in January. So look for that to roll out then.
And then as we get comfortable with that and everyone gets comfortable using it, we're going to add other types of applications on it?
Yes, then we can take it a step further to more of the rezonings. Well, hopefully, we won't have a lot of comprehensive plan amendments in the upcoming years because we've got this one, right? People can always ask, so I can't paint the picture. We're not going to get any, but for those bigger projects, we would like to do that as well.
Great. Go ahead, Sue.
And obviously, the issue like the graphics, that would be on that website, so they'd be able to like look it up, open it up, blow it up.
Yeah, that's a great point, right.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Right, easy to see. We also, the schedule is handed out for our meetings for 2020. And one of the things we talked about was to continue to have work sessions to bring between the planning commission and the other commissions to kind of keep that conversation going. So we didn't figure out details on that yet, but the people, those who are at the work session all agree that that would be a good idea to, you know, just kind of put them on the agenda and.
Yeah, yeah, what we thought we would do is Liz will send out meeting invites for all of the planning commission dates. So it's put into your calendars, so you don't have to do that manually yourself. But we thought, too, for the second meeting, the planning commission's second meeting of every month, we would pencil in a work session and we'll send out meeting notices for that. So it's at that time that we would try to populate additional joint work sessions with other commissions or whatever issues may come up.
Have one already set for that second, right?
We do. For January 29th, we'll have a work session with the Energy and Environment Commission.
Great, thank you. Anything else? No? Go ahead, Lou.
Just like to point out that Greta Dunberg was named Time Magazine's Person of the Year this year. You know, along with the background of kind of scientists alerting us to change happening faster than they were anticipating. So I think we're actually in a bigger world of hurt than we were, than we thought we were before. So I think it's more important than ever that we, that we change what we're doing. So, thank you.
Heard that when I woke up this morning. She continues to amaze me how, you know, thoughtful and well-spoken and.
Well, I mean, it's her future, right? I mean, we're up here, both of us, older, right? And she's got her whole life ahead of her. I mean, I can't imagine what she's going through.
Is there a motion to close the meeting?
I move to close the meeting.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.